Well, I'm not going to bang the gavel because that's not really my style, but I will call this meeting of the Pots Grove School Board to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you like to give us a hand in the Pledge of Allegiance? Would you like to lead us, please? All right, here we go. Start when you're ready.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ah, well done, well done. Thank you very much. So, for those of you in the audience, I'd just like to let you know that our students were very kind enough to invite us to this Friday, there's going to be a Ringing Rocks Steam Day, which is science, technology, engineering, very important, arts, and math day, Friday, October 12th from 9:00 through 11:00, and we've all been invited, so thank you very much for the invitation, we do appreciate it. All right, so at this time, we're going to see if any, I don't have any papers, I don't have any applications for public comment, but certainly we would invite anybody who has had a chance to look at the agenda or who has anything to say in general about how we're doing or how we're not doing, to please step to the microphone and let us know what they think. Hearing done, I'd like to move on to the next bit. There you go, okay. Good evening, everybody, I'd like to thank you for coming out tonight. At this time, I would like to turn the program over to Mrs. Jones and tell us a little bit about Dads of Great Students.
Good evening, and welcome to Ringing Rocks. We're so glad you could be here this evening, and I would like to thank our PTA for the wonderful snacks that they've provided, so I hope you help yourself to those snacks. This evening, we have the pleasure of sharing with you a new initiative that we launched last spring. It started last fall when I was reviewing some of our school-wide positive behavior data with my staff, and we found that a number of the office referrals were coming to me from the playground. No surprise, unstructured areas can be a little bit challenging for students, but especially primary students. And that's when Mrs. Snyder, one of our kindergarten teachers, and Mrs. Mizik-Gallardo, one of our student aides, approached me about Watch Dog Dads. Dogs does stand for Dads of Great Students. So with that, I met with them, and with the blessing of Dr. Shirk and Dr. Harney, we began our pilot of the Watch Dogs program, which is a national program designed to encourage our dads and father figures to become more active in their children's education. So by doing that, we started with a Donuts for Dads event, and I've asked Mrs. Snyder to come and share a little bit with you of what we do here at Ringing Rocks with Watch Dogs.
Good evening, so I wanted to share a little bit about Watch Dog Dads. What we do is we encourage father figures to come into the school. It doesn't just have to be dads, we've encouraged uncles, grandparents, and our goal is just to get more father figures volunteering in the school. When the father figures come in, they meet with Mrs. Mizik-Gallardo, and she takes them through their daily schedule, and they will then come into the lunchroom and out to the schoolyard. And what they're doing is creating structured activities such as, in our, you can see here that they, you know, engage the kids on the swings, they engage the kids in activities such as dodgeball or four-square, and what we are noticing is that the encouragement of the father figures is helping to encourage the children to make good choices, and therefore we're seeing a decrease in our schoolyard referrals. And so, as much as I could go on and on about the program, we did want to share from our kids' perspective, because they have the best perspective on why this is such an important program that we are piloting.
I'm Emma Lyon, and what I like about Watch Dogs is that they get to walk around in the cafeteria and talk to all the kids and play with the kids at recess.
My name is Maria, and I like about Watch Dog Daddy Day because they help me find something to do at recess.
My name is Sophia, and what I like about Watch Dogs is that our dad can play with us at recess.
My name is Zachary, and what I like about Watch Dogs is if I fall and the teacher's aides aren't around, they can always get the teacher's aides.
So the last person that I've asked to join us this evening is Mr. Sutton. He's actually on his way to work, but we started with Mr. Sutton because he was already a volunteer here in our school, and we knew that he would be a great champion for Watch Dogs for us, and he has just done a fabulous job. Mr. Sutton?
Thanks for having me out tonight. Thank you, Mrs. Jones, Dr. Shirk, I know you from, familiar, also a Kutztown graduate there, Ms. Matt Hackettire, we go back a long way. Apologize for my outfit on my way to work here, about 10 minutes. But the Watch Dogs, like Mr. Jones said, is a great program. Obviously, as you can see from the video there, it's, the schools tend to be a female-dominated area with, especially outside, so the dads coming in has been a great program for a lot of the kids who don't have the father figure at the schools, that they could see somebody walking around. I could tell you the responses from the kids have been nothing but positive. I know my daughter, who just spoke here earlier, when she knows I'm coming in for school as part of the Watch Dogs, she's super excited, she tells me all the time, she can't wait till we come in. The kids gravitate to you when you go out to the recess. No offense to women, but something happens when a male goes out on the playground, it seems like all the chaos stops for some reason. I don't know what it is, maybe they're more fearful of a man out there, or whatever it may be, but we go out there, the kids gravitate to us, they really enjoy us being there. All the kids come up to you at recess or in the cafeteria, and they basically come and talk to you, so I think it's a great program. Obviously, it's been on for, you know, just a year or so, and we're trying to get more dads actually involved in the school. We're getting a pretty good response so far, but we have a lot more work to do, but overall the response for it's been nothing but positive, and obviously, it's something I think you guys should, you know, invest in down the road for maybe all the schools to implement it there, because all levels need a father figure or a male figure inside the schools to help out with that kind of stuff, because we need to have those kind of, you know, fathers in our kids' everyday lives. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones.
So that's just a quick snapshot about the launch of our Watch Dogs program, Dads and Father Figures of Great Students. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation, I think that sounds like a very, very, a great program. And speaking from experience on related issues, what I have found is that when a parent, when a father, when anybody volunteers for something like this, and you're exposed to a number of additional children, maybe not your own, and you're out there in the school and you're seeing things, you get as much, if not more, from the program than the kids do. You start to see and appreciate the teachers, and you're going to back them up, and it's going to tighten our community. So every time we get volunteers who are able to come in and help out, and work with our staff, and work with our teachers, it builds our community, it helps our students, and it helps all of us. So, thank you for the program, and thank you to all the participants. I had an anticipatory note on my folder tonight that says I always mess up on the executive session announcement. We had an executive session prior to tonight's meeting for the purpose of discussing litigation. So there it is in the record. Thank you very much, Mrs. Okay, we would like to continue with the board meeting, number five, approval of the minutes. It's 5.1, approval of the monthly board actions for 9/11. Our recommendation is to approve the monthly board actions as submitted for September 11th, 2018. All right, we have a motion to combine 5.1 and 5.2, both of the minutes for September. Any questions, comments on the minutes?
I'll be abstaining from 9:25 as I was...
Okay. So Mrs. Green will be abstaining from 9:25, meaning as she was absent. Okay, with that, are there any other questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no, and record one abstention.
There you go, good job. I make a motion that we accept the high school accounts, middle school accounts, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to approve the, receiving the audits for accounts for audit. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices amount of $8,621,984 for September 2018 as presented.
We have a motion in a second to approve the granting of the orders. Does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no.
I move that we approve the treasurer's report for September 2018 as presented and file it for audit.
We have a motion in a second to receive the treasurer's report and file for audit, so are there any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. Moving, no, moving on to the report of the superintendent, I wanted to take the opportunity to have a discussion regarding our budget surplus. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Nestor with that information regarding.
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. I'm happy to report to the board tonight that we ended the 2017-18 year with approximately $124,000 surplus, which represents about 2.2% of our gross general fund budget. That being said, we had projected a shortfall for the year of approximately $1 million when we did our final projections in May. And so I want to talk to you about what comprised the difference between the $124,000 and the projected deficit. So about $1.1 million total difference there. I'm happy to report that a large portion of the difference was made up by some additional revenues that came in that were somewhat unexpected. Two very solid local revenue trends were in the area of interest income, which we had increased our budget in significantly during the year, our projection significantly during the year, but revenues can, or interest rates continued to rise late in the year, and we got some additional revenue from that. In addition, our real estate transfer taxes, which we get a half of 1% for whenever a property transacts between owners or comes online, that also had a much stronger year this year. We had, once again, projected a significant increase in that budget line, but revenues came in stronger late in the year than we had anticipated. Moving on to state revenues, we had one very unusual area, and this is not necessarily a good trend. We get a subsidy for wards of the state and foster children who attend Pots Grove. It's a supplemental subsidy. That has been relatively flat for the last five years. However, in 2016-17, we had a sharp increase in the number, and it's not a big number, but it's a sharp increase in the number of foster students in Pots Grove. And as a result, our income was up about $115,000 beyond where it was last year. Now that's $115,000 on a projection of $100,000, so it's 100% more. So all in all, our revenues accounted for approximately $400,000 of the shortfall, or of the surplus, which represented about 0.75% of our budget. We had some savings in the area of expenditures. The largest area was in instructional services. It would make sense that that would be the largest area for budgetary savings, because that's our largest expenditure area. About $340,000 there. We also had some savings in the area of curriculum and the facilities department. I had spoken to you earlier in the fall about how, or even in the spring, I guess, when we finished up the 2018-19 budget, that we really had gotten aggressive in cutting back on our budgetary areas to get to the zero increase this year. So I don't anticipate seeing this type of deviation going forward on the expenditure side, even though it's not huge, it's less than 1% of our budget, so it's pretty tight, but I expect to see even less going forward. The question that is posed to you today is how best to use this unexpected revenue. As I indicated, we expected to have about a million-dollar shortfall, which was going to reduce our fund balance for 2017-18. That didn't happen, so we are very close to our limit on our ability to raise taxes, which is an 8% fund balance, and we have an extra source of funds here that may not recur again in the future. So we have a choice, we can either make a decision that affects the 2017-18 budget at this point in time, or we can delay that decision till a future point, and whatever decision we make will affect the 2018-19 budget. So it's up to the board how they want to handle it. But since we've just incurred the replacement of the roof on the middle school, and we know we have an issue with the bridge at the middle school ongoing, and we had distributed previously our 2018-19 capital requests, not that we've agreed to do them all, but a significant amount there. We know we have some other roofs in the district that are in need of repair or replacement, and any number of other things that are popping up on a daily basis. We think this would be a prudent time to continue to support the capital reserve fund with whatever the board feels is the appropriate amount. In my memo that I sent you, I had recommended $1 million, but that's certainly, you know, subject to any discussion we may have. If we make the decision, we, let's back it up a little bit, we anticipate receiving our audit report for the year on November 13th, so if we make the decision at either tonight's meeting or the next meeting, we can reflect a transfer from general fund to the capital reserve fund as of June 30th, if that's the board's wishes, or we can wait until later in the year and revisit this conversation, which is what we did last year. But my recommendation for our ability to maintain the condition of our buildings would be to transfer at least a significant portion of this surplus to the capital reserve fund. So with that being said, I'll take any questions, anyone has.
All right, just a quick question, is, in how much last year did we use for Peasers? And then if we didn't need to use that, why wasn't that part of the recommendation to put back?
In our original budget, we had provided, I believe, $750,000, but as we got the information through on last year's surplus, we had reduced that and ultimately eliminated that. So we're not planning on using any Peasers for the 17-18 budget. We are planning on using $900,000 for the 18-19 budget. For the Peasers reserve, right.
Don't everybody wait for new business, this is the time for people to speak up with, okay, you ready to go?
All right. I just wasn't, make sure I was live here. I, for one, am pleased and thankful that we have a surplus. I've sensed some pressure in the past from the board as a whole that we need to be more cautious, why are we having these surpluses? I'm much more pleased to have this conversation, what to do with the extra versus, yikes, what happened, we're in a negative. So I'm happy and thankful for the positive. My temptation is to suggest that we go with, I forget if it was option two or three now, that said, put it where, you know, it puts us over the 8%, I'm not good with numbers here, so we can't raise taxes, because I feel that we are not in a position yet. I'm not for looking for ways to raise taxes. However, you, as the professional numbers man, are recommending that we put a million into capital, so as far as where I stand now, I'm comfortable with that myself.
The only thing I would disagree with is that, myself personally, the money's not going to go anywhere, so if we decide at six months from now to put it in capital, it still can go to capital. So I'm always the kind of person that likes to be caution and say, look, it's there, we know it's there, when we know we need it, for whichever where we need it, that's when I would put it in the capital at the time, tax in the time, whatever fund it needs to be at that time. I don't like just committing it, because once it's committed, it's done, it has to stay there. So it's the only thing my suggestion would be, is to, let's wait and see how the year progresses first, and then of course, put it to capital if that's what we end up choosing.
Oh, I want to concur with Mr. Parker, and I'd just add that I believe Mr. Nestor and Dr. Shirk and Mr. Nestor's team deserve great commendations for the work that they put forward and the rest of our school board in keeping the budget under control at a time when expenses are rising, and these considerations, financial considerations, sometimes take a backseat. So I think that's a very good thing.
Is there, if we decide to, like Al suggested, hold off until we find that there is a particular need or not, and then put it into capital reserve, is there a timeframe, like a timeline where we have to act?
I would say that it would need to be before we adopt a preliminary, or a proposed final budget in May. So we, the preliminary budget's going to be starting pretty soon, so that was a Freudian slip, but yeah, there's no urgency to make the decision now, other than it's done and we can just close the door on last year and move forward to 1920. But yes, we can wait, there's no difference of transferring it now or transferring it in February or March.
Then I still agree then with Al that I would rather hold off, just, you know, the bridge started out at one cost and then ballooned, so, which would still be, but I would feel better also holding off for a little bit, just to see in case some other emergency, hopefully not, but if it should, at least then we have that to play with until that point where we finally get closer to starting to work on the preliminary budget for next year.
I was going to basically echo the same sentiment as you about time restrictions and when we needed to do this. I'm fine with waiting, but I do ultimately, unless something else comes up, capital fund is the way I think we should go with it.
Yeah, I agree also. I always believed in putting any surplus into the capital fund, but I think if we have time, I'd just wait and see what transpires. And thank you, Dave.
Dave, can you just clarify why you're recommending put it in capital now versus waiting? What's the benefit of being able to fall under last year's numbers?
Just as we start going through the budget, if our ending fund balance is looking like it's going to be above 8%, it may limit our ability to, it won't, it won't limit our ability to raise taxes if we need to, if we do transfer it, or if we use it for some other purpose during the year. But my goal is to provide you with as much flexibility as possible, should you need to raise taxes. And so whether it's now or next March, it's not really an issue, it's just, it's more that it gets done.
Okay, I think everybody's had a chance to kind of voice their opinion, so we have a couple of options. Somebody can make a motion, or we can take no action, and we can revisit this another time. And if we take no action, that just means it stays where it is until such time as we do take action. So I'll wait and hear if there's any motions. Hearing none, let's move on to the next thing. Okay, at this time, we'd like to bring our student board representatives into the fray, and who we'd like to start tonight? Great, thanks.
Um, for tonight, I'm just going to do the normal update stuff, and then Brenna's going to talk about some things that have come up throughout school, because she got a chance to meet with Dr. Ziegler. Sadly, I was at Monco, so I didn't get a chance to meet with him, but she did, so. All back-to-school nights went well, the three elementary schools, middle school and high school. All schools except Lower had their picture days, and Lower's scheduled for October 11th. Ringing Rocks had a book fair last week, all through the whole week. High school students... High school students, ninth, 10th, and 11th graders will be taking PSATs tomorrow. The last of the senior pictures were going on at the high school, October 3rd through the 5th. Sports teams have been having their senior nights and will continue to do so for the next couple of weeks. Girls tennis was September 27th, girls soccer was October 4th, volleyball was last night, field hockey is tonight, boys soccer is on Thursday, and football's on the 26th. All of them that have happened so far went well, except I know the girls soccer, the turf lights went out, but it was Halloween themed, so it was bound to happen. And since our last report, the football team has remained undefeated. Homecoming is coming up next Friday, and the bonfire at the high school is scheduled for the night before. The bonfire is a great place for students and group organizations to make themselves known and do some fundraising for them. I know the Next Right Thing is doing a photo booth to raise some money for their club. Many organizations are starting their own events. The National Honor Society is doing the Blood Drive on October 18th. The Family and Haunted Night hikes that Spark the Wave volunteers that are happening at the Arboreum, I think, right? And student government at the high school is working very hard to plan the bonfire and get everybody that wants to participate involved. And all of the clubs, like National Society, Student Government, Environmental Club, Next Right Thing, Debate Club, DECA, German Club, Ringing Rocks Team, and the Robotics Team have all held meetings either before, after school, or during Pride period. And Brenna will take over now.
Okay, so since our last report, some issues and ideas that students have brought to us include the fact that it's difficult to join more than one club in the high school in terms of Pride period. We're still brainstorming solutions for this, but some ideas that we've had were to have more clubs meet before or after school so that students are able to attend the meetings, or allow students to alternate between which meetings they attend each Pride period. For example, maybe one week a student can go to the Spark the Wave meeting, and then the next week they can attend an environmental club meeting. A second idea that we had, Savannah had the idea, after attending a football game at Pottstown, to start making real tickets for the football games with coupons on the back. At Pottstown, they charge $4, and each ticket has a coupon on the back for local places like McDonald's. And after speaking with Mr. Anspach, the athletic director, he really likes the idea, and offered to look into printing companies that may be able to work with us to make that happen. My last thing is that we've had students from our schools and other schools point out the fact that we don't have eventing machines, specifically before and after sports games and practices. I talked to Dr. Ziegler about this, and he thinks it's a great idea, and he's already working with Mrs. Delena to see if we can make this happen.
Congratulations, great job to all the students who are doing their best this first quarter academically and on the sports fields. And kudos to our new head football coach, Coach Hawthorne, for continuing to lead the team, they say, so far undefeated. Great job.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate your comments and insight. Look forward to more next month as well. We'd like to move on to number 11, action items for personnel.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 11 action items. That would be personnel, 11-2, support staff, change of assignment, 11-3, support staff appointments.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve all of the action items under paragraph 11, 11-1, 2, and 3. Does anybody have any questions on any of these items? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Moving on to action items for business, 12.1, the middle school roof replacement project. We would like to ratify the payment of the invoice for the Pots Grove Middle School Roof Replacement Project as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to combine all business. All right, we have a motion to combine all the business items, 12-1 through 12-5. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any of those items? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Moving on to 12.6, the high school project settlement agreement and mutual release with E.R. Stubner.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to approve 12.6, our settlement agreement with E.R. Stubner for the high school project. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this item? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Okay, moving on to action items for education, 13.1, conference attendance. We recommend the approval of conference attendance as submitted.
I'd like to make a motion that we combine all action items.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the action items on education, 13-1 and 13-2, conference attendance. So does anybody have any questions or comments on those?
Yeah, I have a question. Come on. Just a quick question as into the conference that's going to be about the advanced placement calculus. Do we have this type of course available to our other advanced placement classes? And if so, is there some way we can work out, or maybe send it back to committee, that maybe we should be sending our teachers on a continual education basis to go to these things in so many years type thing?
Mr. Leach, great question, and we do that. We do have a rotating, that goes through the curriculum office with Ms. Vores, the building principal, Dr. Ziegler, and that's a continuous rotating cycle, and so everybody gets professional development as needed.
All right, are there any other questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. So order without objection.
Number 14, committee items. We're asking the Board to accept the minutes of Operations Facilities Committee that was held on September 11, 2018, as submitted.
Is that a second, Al? Yeah. So is that a second, Mr. Leach? Yes. We have a motion, a second, to approve the Operations and Facilities Committee minutes from last, from October 9th. No, delay my last. From 9/11. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Moving on to 14.2, the Policy Committee. We're asking the Policy Committee to please report out to the Board. Mr. Parker?
All right, we discussed several policies. I believe all of them were brought to us because of some changes that were made in the school code this past year. Some of the policies we had just reviewed recently, but we had to go back and update some of them. So the first one, and stop me anywhere along the line if you have any questions about the policy. So the first policy is 006, meetings. It discusses our school board meetings, the structure of the board meetings, and how we run the meetings. Couple of things were discussed and added to a draft for our approval. The first being, the school code now allows and in a sense requires that executive session can now be used to discuss safety concerns. So that is going to be added. The code also required us to change the voting requirements for how the president of the Board is elected. It really doesn't change things too much for us. It went from plurality vote to a majority vote. Some other terminology was clarified, but really didn't change things much. Couple of things were added for abstention from voting. Of course, we all have the option to abstain, but there's a couple ethics issues if you're involved with business-related type things where you're required to abstain at that point. That was the requirements from the school code changes. We took the opportunity to discuss adding to this policy or creating a separate policy regarding phoning in to the board meetings. So we asked Dr. Harney to hold this policy, not move it forward until he could do some research on that, and the committee can bring back to you recommendations and what to include for that policy. All right, there's no questions on 006. Moving to policy 108, adoption of textbooks. The updates to the school code had two things in it. One, they removed the specific timeframe for approval of textbooks. Prior to the change, the code required that textbooks be reviewed every five years, I believe. That requirement's taken out from the school code. The updated code also directed us to change or to add that adoption of digital textbooks are now required. So we had some discussion regarding that issue and what that means in the classroom. So that change will be added. There's no questions on policy 108. We also had to review policy 311, which had just been reviewed not too long ago, reduction in staff. The school code was amended to reinstate seniority provisions regarding suspension of professional employees. Suspension for the purpose of numbers, not for disciplinary issue. Performance evaluation ratings are number one consideration, followed by seniority. Maybe Dr. Harney can clarify a little bit better than me, but my understanding is, if, say for example, there's a science teacher who, because the numbers were cut out, you know, we're cutting back on the number of science teachers, yet they hold a certification in math, then, and if they're more senior, if they've been here longer, then they get first dibs, and it could be that of math, as an example only, teacher might, position might be eliminated. Any clarification on that from the committee? Okay. All right. We also reviewed policy 806, child abuse. Because of the number of changes, the whole policy was revamped. It wasn't just an update. Not too many significant changes, I don't believe. They added some, there is a new Protection Act, Trafficking Victims Protection Act. So we were required to have that in there as part of abuse reporting. Another change that was made that stuck out to me was anybody, any employee that witnesses or suspects child abuse is required to directly report it to Childline versus going through the counselor or the principal of the building. I don't necessarily agree with that, but it is not a decision that we are allowed to make. It's part of the school code. So every employee reports it directly at this point to Childline. And just a minor thing, we're now required to display posters with the Child Protective Service law. So I believe that was the gist of the changes and just some terminology, how they define things. There's no questions on that policy. We then looked at policy 808, food services, which is another one we had just reviewed. So the change here, K to 8, if a student owes money, we still can't say anything directly to that student. 9th to 12th, unless they're emancipated prior to that, we can directly say, you owe such and such money discreetly, but we're allowed to do that. Another change that was put into the code is we can restrict privileges and activities for students that owe money for meals, as long as it's consistent with what we would restrict for other things, owing money for library books, as an example. And that was the significant changes there. Last policy we looked at, policy 210.1, possession slash administration of asthma inhalers and epinephrine auto injectors. So the main change there was, schools are now allowed to have, basically, I consider generic epi pens ordered by the school physician in the school's name. So if a student goes into anaphylactic shock, we're able to then use that epi on that student. So the policy talks about that, allowing us to do that, as well as allowing students to carry inhalers and their own epi pens, and the procedure that they have to go through to show that they're mature enough and responsible enough to do that. So that's the policies. Any questions on any of those policies? Al?
Not necessarily on these particular policies, but just a question to possibly bring up for future policy committee. Instead of me bringing this in as new business, I figured I'll bring it up here because it's part of policy committee. I couldn't find, and if I missed it or not, please let me know, I couldn't find a policy specific to tailgating inside our school grounds. I think it runs on like a procedures, and will we allow it, won't we allow it for some events, for some other events? We don't. My question just is, I'd like the Policy Committee possibly to discuss and maybe consider creating a actual policy on whether or not it will or will not be allowed. The reason being is, everybody knows, obviously, I'm involved in the booster club, and it's kind of a passion of mine to donate back to the athletics and such. In the last, the other night, when we had the girls soccer team, the girls soccer team was allowed to have a tailgating. Our sales went from $350 of net the night before to $47. Now that's $300 I was not able to give back to the actual athletics of our own thing. Now, I have no problem if that's going to be in, but I had four, five, seven volunteers there, I had food there and everything. I need to know that stuff ahead of time. I do, I talked to Mr. Anspach, he assured me, and I don't want to put him on the spot, he didn't know, so I don't want to put him on the spot. It's just a procedure we didn't have, so he wasn't sure. And it does promote school spirit and such, so I'm not going to say it doesn't. It's just something I think maybe the Policy Committee could look into something official so we know what it's going to be or not. Same thing would happen with a football game. I can imagine the PTSA would not be too happy if over homecoming, they decided to have tailgating up in Ringing Rocks like we had one year, and then all of a sudden, no one comes down to eat at all. You know, it's just something I would ask the Policy Committee to look into.
Can you describe a little more what you mean by tailgating? So like, basically having kind of like a party out of the trunk of their car? Not selling things, but that's just bringing the crowd down?
Come on. Just simply, the back end of the turf club, the turf field, we had probably about three to five tents set up from the parents, like you would at a soccer event, and they had a cookout and everything, so everybody was allowed to go there to eat and everything before they went over to the game.
Yeah, we can certainly bring that up at the committee and maybe see if it's something other districts have looked at in the past.
Yeah, I think also, maybe the discussion should start in co-curricular athletics, because I think, you know, tailgating, there's a couple of different thought processes with that. I mean, it's not Division One Penn State tailgating.
Right.
It's not Division One Temple tailgating.
No.
Okay? So, but I do believe there's a sense of camaraderie there that families and teams bring to that piece, that I would just want the athletics and co-curricular group to start there, to see what type of environment do we want to create on our campus? And, you know, if, you know, a lot of times, you can't put a, you can't put a value on that type of camaraderie, because sometimes, sometimes there's a mesh with kids and parents, and sometimes there's not, you know? And it's tough to predict those pieces. And I do understand, obviously, that the commitment that you've made and the boosters, Al, to having like a budget, a thought process of how much you're going to get per night, and when you lose a night, it's a big effect.
We know ahead of time, like, so we don't buy all the, have all the volunteers.
Right. So I just, I would just want that to be more of a community, you know, the athletic co-curricular, get more of the community thoughts behind that. And then if it's something that would want to come out of, rather than a guideline, or a guideline that would go to policy, then we'd kick it back up. So that would just be, you know, my thought.
I have two questions on two unrelated topics.
I have two questions on two unrelated topics. First question is, you mentioned slightly different procedure for electronic books versus hardcover. Could you elaborate on that a little bit, and then I'll have a follow-up?
Yeah, so what that means is, and we actually debated the term that went right before. In other words, if it's the major, I don't know what word we came up with, the main textbook, right? Or previous to this policy, it just said textbook, because when this policy was written, there was no such thing as digital textbook. So, if they're not using a textbook, a hard copy textbook, but they're using a digital textbook as their main source, then that has to go through the whole board approval process, as opposed to handouts, or, you know, we'll do a chapter from here, a chapter from there, that kind of thing. So as long as it's the main source.
Okay, the comment is that very often with eBooks, since there's no paper copy, revisions are often instantaneous, and there might be a different, well, you and I might classify as a different edition, but it's still called the same edition, it's still called the same text, and that can create problems down the road. And that's something you need to think about as you go forward, because publishers, and presumably, we're talking about something that's going to be a PDF that's going to live on a laptop like this, and there could, you could find several versions of the same thing during a course of an academic year. Second question, in talking about fining students who haven't paid their bills, many high school students already have cars and drive. Is there any, was any thought given to restricting parking privileges for non-payment of bills?
Here we go. I don't think under this bill, over collection of, you might be able to do that for other fees, but you can't do it for food service collection.
And just to add to that, and it's a good point, my understanding of the policy, or of the code, is if that's what we do for other bills, if we restrict parking privileges because the library books are overdue, correct me if I'm wrong, then we can do that, but it can't be specific to food service. So it's not a bad thought, maybe it's something the administration wants to consider, you know, globally, but we can't, as Mark said, specifically put it on this. Yeah, that's right.
Okay, I don't think we have to take any action on that. We've received the minutes. We're good. Thank you very much for that very thorough summary.
Okay, moving on to new business. The other thing tonight I would just like to add under new business is just a reminder to the school board that on Thursday night, the 11th, at 7 o'clock in the LGI at the high school, we have our calendar committee meeting. So I just wanted to, you know, again, update everybody on that, and everybody is welcome to attend.
Thank you very much. Now, we always get somebody, I'll start over here for no real particular reason. Any new business? Do you have to look at your notes? Alright. Does anybody else have new business?
I do, but I have a question.
Okay, go ahead Patty.
I was able to clear up my schedule, so I will be attending the PSBA conference in Hershey this Friday. So, I'm really excited, because I always believe in the education with the PSBA. So I want to kind of find out a little bit more what they do, what they can do for us, what courses they have. So I will be asking for approval for a one-night stay, which will be Friday, October 19, probably not to exceed $300. Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday. I'm attending Friday, the conference, yes.
I'd make a motion to allow Patty to stay. So I don't know how the motion has to be worded, but I would like to make a motion to, for Patty Grimm to stay Thursday, October 18th, at the expense of the hotel.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Quick question. In the past, it was, it was part of our policy that the district paid for the attendance fees, as a normal part of it, but not necessarily. We did have to get prior approval for the hotel, and that's what we're doing here tonight, right?
Correct.
Okay, very good. So, does anybody here have any questions? If not, then, public comment. Does anybody have any questions or comments on paying for lodging for Mrs. Grimm, for the attendance? Not hearing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Just one more thing, and I don't know if Mrs. Pacito's out there, she can assist me, but last night I attended the Pots Grove Village meeting, and I got to tell you, I was really touched and blown away by a community that comes together for special needs. And they, they come together, last night they had a representative from the MEC unit, and discuss puberty. Very sensitive subjects, but, but I think we need to get more involved. They had about 25 people there last night, and one big meeting that's coming up, which I think is so important, is Understanding an IEP, which will be on November the 28th, 2018. They do have a Facebook page, but I didn't know if Ms. Pacito could speak on their behalf and explain a little bit to the community. It's just such a great group of parents, together with literature and bouncing ideas off, and Mrs. Pacito was there, but I was very touched by this.
Thank you, Mrs. Grimm. We were surprised and excited to have you in attendance. The Pots Grove Village started last school year, and it's really a connection. It's intended to be a partnership between district residents, specifically, parents of family, families of students with special needs, but really, anybody's welcome to attend. We have support staff that generally come, we've had teachers that come, and certainly, Dr. Kanter and I participate in the discussions. The intent is really twofold, to provide a networking opportunity for people with like-minded interests to know that they have a support system, and to kind of pick each other's brains for ideas, and have a little bit of a social time. We have refreshments, so that's a plug if anybody is interested in joining. But it's also a time for us to become educated as a group together, about how to work collaboratively through a process, how to meet the collective needs of our students in a responsible and agreeable manner. So, we had about seven events last year. We're looking for more attendees. We do advertise on Facebook, we advertise on the website, and we use the school messenger alert and remind to get the word out. Our teachers are helping by sending home emails and backpacking information to families. So, thank you for plugging our next event. It will be on November the 28th. We try to keep our meetings to an hour and a half to be respectful of everybody's time, but usually, there's, there's a desire to stay longer, so that's a good thing, leave people wanting more. And Dr. Kanter and I will be presenting that night. It will be part two of understanding how to be actively engaged in your child's IEP. So we had a really good attendance last time, lots of good conversation, and we're hoping to keep that momentum going. Thanks, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to thank you. You know, we all have a workday, and you just, your workday is, I don't know when it stops. Thank you for supporting our community outside of school. You're, obviously, you're educating parents when they're coming to work with you on behalf of their children, but then, to put in the extra time to educate us as a board, to educate the parents in their groups as they come together, it's just, it's really remarkable. And so, thank you, and thank you for the work that you're doing for our special ed department, for our community. I really appreciate it.
Last thing I wanted to bring up for new business is I do have to say a very large thank you. So, give me a little bit of background. The Booster Club, in collaboration with a lot of the athletics and music and everything like that in the community, is in charge of actually creating our Pink Out shirts. We do our Pink Out Night and such. The one I'm wearing, per se, I put at the back of it, is actually right here in front. Stand up. Stand up.
Turn around, yeah.
I have to say that this year has been just an exceptional year so far, and we're only in October 9th, October 9th today, alright, and we've already raised over $3,000. Of all that money is going to go to the Phoenixville Cancer Center. We're doing, right now, we've sold out of our pink shirts, we sold out of our black shirts, we sold out of the gray heather, except for a couple. I have the slate gray left. However, I know people by time they see this video, they are not going to be able to do this, but by the end of the week, I'm putting in a special order, if anybody wants the pink, the black, or the heather gray, I am putting in a special order for those. All they have to do is email the Pots Grove Boosters, with an S, at gmail.com, and if you put your name and such, then I can order those as well. But I do have to say thank you so much to all of the sports teams, all of the music kids, all of the community that has helped and volunteered in creating the design, and helping us get out the shirts and getting out the donations. We still have three more weeks left, so I'm very confident we're going to possibly get up to, into the 4,000 range of donation. So I'm very, very thankful to everybody that's helped. Thank you.
Very nice, it's great.
Thank you.
And thank you. Alright, does anybody else have anything for new business? That's a no. Alright, hearing none, motion to adjourn will be in order. So moved, second? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you very much.